Today's session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called Order at 4:02 PM on Wednesday, March 14th, 2018 in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Williams, Superintendent of the Schools, and an unvoting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board for Ms. Edgar. Please call the board.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Mrs. Becker. Chair Marvin here. Mr. Schusner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger. Mr. Smith?
I'm here, but I'm gonna sign off, because you know, I just, it's just, everything's garbled, even just your talking, so I'm gonna sign off.
Okay.
I can't hear. Thanks.
Where is he? Not here. Ms. Workman, here. Oh. Let's stand for the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with infinite justice.
2.01 approval of the agenda, are there any changes?
No changes.
Who approves?
Second.
Good. And second, to accept the agenda, on favor, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion denied. 7.01, boundary guiding change document development, this is an information item, Mr. Williams.
Yes, I did make paper copies for individuals, I know some of you probably have it electronically, but this is the draft that I sent to you yesterday, just to kinda get us started. Just, for the two new board members who are not familiar with this tool, this is a tool that we were trained in, Basil Dennis Keithborough was doing some training with Cabinet and Board, and basically a guiding change document, just exactly what it says. It's a document that guides the Cabinet to do their work, and if you notice, there's three columns, the column on the left is current reality, column to the right, those are the outcomes, these are things that the Board wants us to accomplish. And then, the middle column, unacceptable means, or when you're trying to accomplish these things, you can't do these things. And what we have in here is just a draft, the Cabinet fits in time, we looked at the guiding change document that we used in 2014, when we did boundaries back then, to get some of the suggestions from there. But really, the goal is to get this finalized, and then as quickly as possible, our hope is that we can bring one, or more than one, option to the 20th board meeting, and the way that goes, I think in 2014, when we did this, I think we had three, maybe four, different options, and what we did is we ranked them. The first one, we presented, this one we believe met majority of the outcomes, and then the one next one met a few of the outcomes, and so forth. So, really, it's a good guide for us, so as we're doing boundaries, you kinda let us know what you, what kind of results do you want, and then trying to accomplish those results, don't do these things. And then, we bring back proposals to share with you, we believe it reached this outcome. If we have one where it reached the outcome, but it might have impacted one of the unacceptable means, so we would point that out to the Board. But really, it's, it speeds up the process, instead of the Cabinet kinda guessing what the Board wants, it had a pretty clear outcome, you want us to get, and what you can't do to try to accomplish those outcomes, and then we bring those options to you. Like I said, our hope is to do that on the 20th, because as I shared with you last Friday, we're really in crunch time with staffing, we did some staffing today, actually, one of the buildings potentially could be impacted by boundary changes, so we said, this is what we know now, we may have to call you back in and review your staffing based on if your enrollment changes. So, we're moving forward with that process, and then letting those know, at least that we're aware of, that you might have enrollment changes, and tell them they may have to come back in again to review their staffing. And what I mean by that is, if you remember, one of the documents that was in Board Docs at our last meeting, we were asked, present, what are the class sizes at the buildings that were impacted by the boundary changes? And one of the things that I think one of our parents pointed out was, with the boundary changes, taking students out of one building, their class sizes went up. And the reason was, they were a four section at that grade level, but when we took kids out, we were able to reduce a section, but still stay under the class size caps that the Board established for grade levels. So, there may be, that's why I said on Friday, how these changes impact sections, which then impacts, we may have to displace teachers, and then they have to be in the flow of wherever there's openings, and we try to get all of that resolved before spring break, so teachers kinda know where they're gonna be next year, or if they're gonna even be here next year, as soon as possible, so they can plan accordingly. So, any questions on the guiding change document, like I said, I do have a paper copy that went around, Wendy has it on her computer, so as we work on it, she can add it to the document, which will be up on the TV screen. So, any questions about the document itself?
Well, I have one, and I'm curious, is the guiding change document only used if and when there's a difference between what the Board may desire, and what...
No, for example, back when we were looking at the one-to-one computer devices, we did this before we even started that process. So, it can be used anytime, it's help, as I said before, it's helpful to us, because we're not guessing, we know exactly what you want us to do, and then we can usually get it done that way. So, it's used in variety of situations.
And the reason I asked was, I was curious as to whether or not it was used in the options that you presented to the Board.
When we, no, we just started, so we wouldn't start from scratch, we kinda wanted to get us a jumpstart, so we wouldn't probably be here all night if we started from scratch. And like I said, some of these statements were taken from our 2014 document, when we did boundaries. Any other questions? Is there any? I would suggest that we maybe start on the left column, see if we captured the current reality, we, basically, we included all of the building capacity percentages that we presented to the Board a couple times, I think at the study sessions, and also the board meeting calling that, and then we did add a few additional comments there. The school Board expressed an interest to further explore school boundaries, that was based on the conversation we had at our last meeting. One of the things that I think we might have mentioned at our last meeting, because recently coming into the picture is the amount of growth, continued growth at Gibbs, I don't know if you've been out in that area lately, but there's a, I think it's a 63-unit apartment complex that's going up, literally, right across the street from the school, and then the further, I think a little further east of the school, they're getting the land ready to start building some additional housing, which will be really close to the schools. That's why we put that statement there. And then we put current attendance boundaries, resolve enrollment mismatch, the planned school capacities, and we've mentioned the schools that we've kinda been talking about here the last month or so, and then buildings throughout the district are using space creatively, and I think we brought this to attention before, we do have some buildings that have music or art on the cart, because they don't have enough classroom space, so that means that teacher travels to each classroom and does music or art. You probably haven't been hearing from that staff, saying they're crowded, they don't have space, they're just kinda adjusted to what's going on, and made good use of the space that they currently have. So, we do have some sites, I do think we do have that specific information, if you need that, as far as how many schools are doing that right now at the elementary level, so we did track that down. So, that's what we were able to come up with as far as our current reality, I don't know if there's any, any board member that would like to add something to that section?
Something Don had brought up, from a parent had brought up, is do we know what the fire capacities are of the facilities?
The what?
The fire marshal capacities.
That is not a true statement? We get, Scott, we get fire marshal once a year, and we've never been cited for that?
The question was, do we know what the capacities are?
Capacity...
Building capacity, every building has a capacity, acceptable capacity?
Yeah, that's the number we, I mean, we use the MDE guidelines, I don't, not aware of any fire marshal having any standards on that, and we've never been cited for being over capacity.
I'm not saying that we have been, I'm just wondering if we know what the capacities are.
I don't, like I said, I don't know.
He's on the sheet.
No, he's talking about fire marshal, successful capacity, so I don't know if capacity for a school building is the same as, I know, like in our gyms, there's a certain which we were very careful not to exceed that, at our JM Austin game, but I think the new capacities for something like that, I'm not aware of them giving that capacity for like an entire school building. I'm not aware of anything like that.
There's so much free space throughout the day, in my, in the gyms, if you put everybody in a classroom, and you have space, you still have that gym, that's a huge space, and so for us to get to the max capacity would be, I can imagine, the ground, there are so many, you wish I could certainly ask, and try to find out, but it's based on the split foot of the building.
I think the only thing that I'm aware of, that my previous teaching history of John Marshall, was that we could not have stuff through hallways.
Yeah, certainly that too. Yeah, those are obstructions, that's a different topic.
So, when we had to move the grand piano from choir orchestra room into the hallway, that was an issue, but there was no way to have all the students and the grand piano in the room at the same time, so we had to figure out a different solution.
I will just take it as, no, we don't know the capacity, so that's...
I'm not aware of anything, Don, are you aware, if you're in the state of Minnesota, is there any capacity that firemen give in schools, or... Well, since Mark and I did have a conversation, and it was a result of a reporter from a local news station, wondering if any of our schools exceeded the occupancy level, I said I didn't know, I said, you know, I'm somewhat embarrassed to say that, I spent 27 years with the Anchorage Fire Department, and that was part of my responsibility. So, yes, there are some true statements being made, in terms of your large open areas, such as the gym or auditorium, where they would have occupancy sign or limitations, which also extends however to schools in general, that's why exits have to, there have to be so many exits, and they have to be so many feet wide. Though the superintendent asked, did I know specifically regarding the state of Minnesota, to which I will say no. So, the local newspaper, reporter did say she would, not a nanny and curtain on my part, she raised the question, and she said she would be checking with the local fire marshal's office.
Since I've previously worked in architecture, I fully understand the question. It's a good question. I'd be really surprised if there's not a capacity number.
Well, I wouldn't be surprised, since we get, every building gets evaluated annually, that if we were violating some capacity, we would be ran out of what's...
Sure.
And what we did, for example, exactly what you gave, Don, there was, a few years ago, at Gibbs, we were required to put up, I think it was about a four-foot-high wall in the hallway, because they were taking kids out to do one-on-one tutoring, and it was pushing too far out into the, into the hallway, so we had to put a little wall to keep them beyond it, also the hallway would be whatever the regulation is as far as width. But, and I see the reports that the fire marshal does, when our schools are cited for things, and we, to the best of my knowledge, we've never been cited for having too many kids in a building, we've been cited for too many plugs, or plugs and cords and stuff like that, that never...
And I don't think we are either, but I just want to know if we are coming upon a threshold at which we would have a problem. If we don't know what the threshold is, we don't know.
If there is a threshold.
Right.
For buildings, for school building.
Right. If this regulated the schools are, I'd really be surprised if they haven't regulated that.
So, still on the current reality, and I do have a granddaughter that attends at Gibbs, so I drive by that area that you referenced, do you know when construction will begin, and when it is slated to be completed, so that we will know when those impacts might occur?
I think that, I think the date I gave you was 21, 22, before a new school door would open for kids, so that's why I suggested, some, one of the, I think when I shared with you, the four themes that we got from parents, one theme was wait until we build a new school, and I think I said, we go to the voters in the fall of 19, by the time you get the money and design, the doors will open in the 21, 22 school year.
I meant more so in terms of the housing, multi-family housing.
Oh, yeah.
We're still building public hearings on, you know, 60-minute building, they're building at 50th Street, 50th Avenue, but they are building some of the family homes, it's still going there.
Right.
But I didn't know all the homes to use at Gibbs.
One other thing I noticed under the Y is that we have numbers, 1% capacity for the schools as of last December, they don't reflect what the capacity, percentage capacity is going to be in the next fall, partly because we don't know at all the buildings. But on this document, it looks as if Hoover is going to be at 115% capacity. Why, for instance, will we want to move any students into that? We do have a document that's online, giving the information of numbers of students, the capacity...
Yeah, this is current, which we, as we speak right now, we haven't moved preschool classrooms out of Churchill or Hoover, so those classrooms currently have those kids in them, so they'll be moving out.
Yeah, and we've got another document that projects a little bit what it will be going to get in the town, but I just think it's important for us to note that, that if we're talking, for instance, about moving kids from one school into Hoover, Hoover next fall will not be Hoover enrolled. So, we need to look at something beyond just the numbers right here, the percentages on this sheet.
Shane, so if I am following you correctly, the percentages presented on the sheet under the Y were midpoint capacity as of December 1, 2017. I think at our February 20th meeting, there were some data points that differed a little from the December 1, and in some instances, the numbers were, student population numbers were, in some instances, for instance, Elton Hills was 514 instead of 525. And so I then wondered, if I was following that information correctly, what the adjusted percentage of capacities would be.
Do you have a, did I send you those earlier today, the percentages of next year as of today?
Yeah, and just trying to stay true to the process on the form, it says current reality, not what your reality is going to be next year, so that's why those numbers are... Yeah, I do have, John provided, if we roll all the kids up into, you know, we advance them a grade, we do have that. The only thing I will caution you, the kindergarten numbers right now are not real solid, because we still have some families that need to come in and register, we know they're out there, but they just haven't come in to register, so we aren't counting them until they officially register. So, John, do you wanna walk, anybody just wanna walk us through this document that we're passing out?
Yep. All right, so this document shows numbers from last week, on March 8th, by building, not assuming any boundary changes, for next school year, for 18, 19. And as Mike said, we're right now short about 332 kindergarteners, from what we're projecting. So, we have 976 who have come in and registered as of last week, but we are budgeted, or expecting about 1,308, so that's why we're off. And so, just keep that in mind, that every site is probably short 10, 20 more students at least. So, the yellow column is the number that we have, that we're showing right now, the green column is kind of what our capacity number is, and then the middle color column on the far right, that says percent to capacity, is where we would be for the fall. Again, all of these numbers should probably be just a little bit higher, once we have more kindergarten kids. And so you can see Churchill is sitting at 88%, for example, Riverside 64%, Gage 82%. So, these are the schools on the low end, Sunset 88. And then our high numbers haven't changed a lot, like Elton Hills still reading out at 143, Bishop 133, Gibbs is only at 109 on this report, but I think we, we thought there's still at least 20-plus kindergarteners to register there, so that's gonna bump up their numbers higher.
And is the Gibbs number inclusive or exclusive, of exception to boundaries?
It would have kept everybody in.
Okay. So, students who are going there now are still counted in these numbers?
John, do you have any kindergarten showing, which schools for the last couple years, which schools tend to get the most, most students in over the summer?
We could get that, I don't have it at my fingertips right now, but we could...
And I know that's really fluctuate, but I'm just thinking in terms of likely, which of these buildings, Gibbs, I'm assuming, at least their staff is saying that they tend to get an influx of kids during the summer and the fall.
And we think that's true of Riverside, Gage, I think there's a lot of late registrations in those buildings, to Franklin, Howard.
Very typically, our kindergarten numbers, we know that they're out there, and even though we, we know, we know where they should...
We think we know where they should, based on maybe where they were when we last had contact with them, from maybe their preschool screening, so we think they should be in this neighborhood. My understanding is most principals now have taken that list and called them, some have said, nope, not going yet, wait till we're six, some have said, no, we move, some have said, nope, we're not gonna come for whatever reason, or some have said, we'll be down there right away, and we'll get registered, so...
But in general, I think what I'm going at, trying to get at is, my assumption is, there's not usually a huge influx of a whole section of kindergarteners that we didn't expect.
No, usually what happens, it seems like maybe we think we're gonna get 12 more, but we get 18 more, and but that pops us over to needing another teacher's hiring in the middle of the summer.
And we know just from past history, there's a couple buildings that we know, they'll have, in August, they'll be having some kindergarteners show up, and so we kinda, as we get closer to finalizing kindergarten sections, we'll know that, and we'll plan for that, knowing that it'll be August, before some of these kids will show up.
And then, you know, talking about housing, again, I don't know how possible it is predicting, but having families move in, in August, and September, October, to particular parts of town, to particular school areas, so that there may be not just a kindergarten who have been registered.
Right.
A family with three, four kids.
We do believe there's, we're under our projections right now in other ways, it's not just kindergarten, so we do think there's that kind of summer churn, if you will. It'd probably be helpful at some point to share with you, like the mobility report, the number of kids that like withdraw and move out in the summer, the number of kids that enroll and move in, it shocked me, I didn't realize how much traffic there is in that area.
Yeah, you mentioned that last week, and it's really tough. Under...
Just during, just during the school year, I think there's around 500 kids that move just because their parents wanted them to move, or for whatever reason, they moved, not because we told them to. But in the summer, I feel like it's, just remembering maybe like 1,500 move in, 1,500 move out, and it's a lot to move in.
Sure, 3%, 9%?
So, Shane, it seems to me that, in terms of process, it's almost as if, this process is suggesting that it's the Board who wants to initiate boundary changes? And I'm not sure, well, I am sure, that that's, I don't recall the Board requesting the superintendent to undertake the effort of initiating boundary change discussions, and so for us to then now have the ball bounce to us, as if we did, but I understand, and you, Superintendent, said earlier, that the two newbies, Mark and myself, would not be familiar with the process of how we get to this point. But I think it is important to, at least in my mind, as I walk through the why, the not how, and the what, to keep in mind that this really wasn't a Board request to do this, though I think at the conclusion, or part of our last board meeting, and Debra, I'm gonna kinda look to you for a moment, there, there may be longer than a moment, I'm not sure, there was the thought or discussion of Elton Hills in particular, and I don't know if that's what drove the discussion, advanced the discussion to, well, let's have a guiding change document. Do you recall basically what you had suggested in the flow of that, or?
No.
No problem. Well, I'll add a little bit to that. Back in 2014, when we did boundaries, actually, the Board did direct the superintendent that we should probably look at our boundaries every few years, we didn't look at it in 2016, but I think as we were working with the long-range facility committee, and decided we need to build, based on our data, we need to build two new schools, and maybe to buy its time, we do some adjustments, because if you remember, the Board has been having, not a lot, but some parents coming to public board and say, our schools are crowded. And then when we have been doing the data presentations, when they've been presenting their, their plans to the Cabinet, some of the buildings have been, the staff have been telling us that. So, it was, I think, a combination of all of that, this, I guess we're not trying to say, oh wow, let the Board take the blame for the boundaries, it's just something that, I guess we're trying, we recommended with option one, to try to balance out some of the enrollment that we had across the district. And our options didn't, weren't approved, so then, I think it actually might have been Ann, who suggested we use this document, and we probably should have done that before us bringing option one and two to the Board, but, but we were told that we should probably look at our boundaries every two years, back in 2014, when we did that.
I'd like to make a comment from something you just said. First of all, yes, the Board does take the blame for making decisions, because the final decision rests with us. And I think this is the kind of process that, at least it shows me, that we are getting the information that we need to make, hopefully, an intelligent, reasoned decision, that not everybody's gonna like, but it's, it's up to Mike and his team to get us that information, which we've gotten a lot of information, I very much appreciate that, with their recommendations. But the final vote does rest with us, so that if the public is mad about what happens, you know, we're ultimately to take blame and credit.
And I would like to shift the conversation if we could, to instead of taking blame, to taking the opportunity to make things better for... to taking the opportunity to make things better for some schools and for some kids. And certainly, there will be people who are indeed not happy, at least short term, with the decisions that are made. But I think, from my perspective at least, part of this, in addition to what Mike said about doing a regular review of boundaries, was also the opportunity that presented itself when we knew that Hoover would have some additional classrooms available to kids, when we have schools that are considerably over capacity, and next fall, there will be classrooms available that we could move kids into. I think that this is exactly the right time to take advantage of that. And Mike, can I follow Mr. Williams' work there?
I'm your statistician.
And I know we're anxious to move forward, and I agree with your comments there, Shane. Yet, we still have schools such as Pinewood, Falwell, Lincoln, who are among the, aside from Bishop and Elton Hills, which are among the top five elementaries that are highest in their student count and percentages, yet none of this will address that. So.
And I think, Don, that's a really important point to make, because there are other schools which are obviously way over what they should be, and this won't address that. So when we're looking at the what of this, to my mind, at least, that's something we need to talk about, is that I think that what we're trying to do right now is not adjust the entire district. I think that we're hoping that we can wait for another two or three years or so until we get another school or two built, and then do some, I'm guessing, at least some fairly drastic changes. For the time being, take advantage of space that we have available to make at least a couple of the sites a little bit better, short term. But I think it is important to address the fact that there are other schools that we are not talking about right now, which are absolutely overcrowded.
Why aren't we, the reason I ask is, when Longfellow came in front of us and said they wanted to change from a predominantly choice school back to a neighborhood first and then a choice, you know, we're told that by the projections, which of course, the projections are not absolutes, that from the neighborhood numbers alone, here's going to be over 100%. But then when we look at these numbers here, they're still projected, Longfellow's still projected at 92%. In Pinewood, it's neighboring school, from a neighborhood point of view, is at 130%. So I get why we looked at the north side of town, because the classroom's opening up in Hoover. But with Longfellow going back to a neighborhood, and its neighbor's school still being heavily over capacity, I don't know why we're not talking about adjusting that boundary too.
Well, and that's maybe part of what we need to discuss in terms of this document, is the what. Are we looking at the entire district? Are we intending to keep the focus narrow?
Well, I, in hindsight, I'd probably do it differently, but my plan was, this is round one. Next year, we'd be back, and probably, my thinking is have to take more out of Gibbs because of the growth that we're seeing, address Bishop, address some of the others, instead of trying to do it all at once. I can see arguments both ways, and get everybody mad at one time and move on, or this group here, and then next year, another group. So either way, but, so I guess that's why our, I think it might have been, I'm losing count of an option, but I think it's option five that we introduced Tuesday night, was let's sit back a minute, let's really map on the entire boundary adjustment for the entire district, have it approved next November to be in place for the following year. So everybody, I mean, because you, I, you look at Bishop, I mean, that's one of the higher ones. So instead of trying to catch it a second time around, let's just do, spend a little more time and make adjustments that'll impact all of the buildings in the district that are crowded. But that's kind of what we, our thinking was when we did option five. But my thinking way back when we introduced option one was, we know we'd come back again and address, because I even got asked by several parents at the parent community meeting, what about Bishop? And I said, well, our plan is to come back next year and address them, and probably have to take some more out of Gibbs, just because of the constant growth that we're seeing over there.
I have a question about choice schools. I see that Lincoln is at 130% capacity, and since that's choice and there's a lottery, shouldn't we address that? Or do we still have, I'm still confused about what policies we have or don't have regarding siblings. Do the siblings have to get in on their own?
District-wide options, siblings, so it is the first preference.
Okay.
We addressed that a little bit this year. We've, as kids went through the system, we've got older grades and left for writing reasons, they weren't really good at open those spaces up. So Jackie has, I don't remember the exact number, but we added a lot of kids here early recently, I think, around semester time, to some of the grade levels, to get their numbers closer to the district cap. So, and we'll, I think Jackie told them that the district will now take over monitoring that piece as well, not just the lottery part, but monitoring the kids leave, because there are kids waiting to get in. They just, I don't think, it wasn't a priority to reach out to them and say, I now have a fourth grade spot, do you want? And that's why I think their numbers are a little down.
It's kind of tricky, too. Ideally, we would want them to be at 60 per grade level, to be the same as Washington and Longfellow, Montessori. So 60 times nine, they really should be holding 540, you know, that's going to really tax the building to be at 540, but that's more equitable to.
Well, you know, since they're a K-8 building, it makes it even more complicated, because they have middle school, and you have other programings, and then they have one gym that's also used as a locker, or a lunchroom. So some of it's constrained by having a middle school there, too, that they're not able to probably go higher. But we think that they can go higher than they've been, and we've been trying to address So any additions or subtractions from the why column? There were some on the back, or some of you, those you captured or not. Okay, all right, let's jump to the results or the outcomes that you would like us to What we came up with is a better match of capacity, enrollment, maintaining class sizes within the board approved targets, maximize balancing of students to all school capacities, sensitive to current elementary students moved recently, which we did do that with option one. We talked about that group of Riverside, kids that were, in 2014, were moved to Jefferson, and we didn't want to turn around and move them back to Riverside. And then E is bridge the long range needs, design to implement in the fall of 2019, that was our recommendation, and engage stakeholders with the opportunity for feedback. We did, at one time, talk about, do we put a number, you know, move 100 kids out of building A, and 100 out of whatever, but we decided not to go that route, but we'll see if that's the direction the board would like us to go.
Well, in regards to numbers, there were numbers associated with the option one and two. And I don't know if those numbers are simply arrived at based on, if we adjust the boundary, this will be the total amount of students impacted by those adjustments. And so I'm not sure the board would, well, I don't know how we could even put a number in play without, first of all, understanding the budgetary, not the budgetary, the boundary impact. And maybe more so, you were just simply wondering if we wanted to throw a number out.
Right, yeah, because I think in option one, we took, was it 100 or 80-some kids out of Elton Hills, and I don't remember how many out of Jefferson, but for me, personally, that number's helpful, because we know, and we draw lines, and we know how many kids that were in that section, if that's not enough. I mean, I'd rather have that than come back and have an option than you say, you're not taking enough kids out of Elton Hills, for example. We debated back and forth on that, on that piece.
Just a question then, in terms of boundaries in general, how are you able to map the boundary based on where the kids may be?
We have a software program where literally it has our school map. And if we move the boundary this way, it tells us how many kids, what grade level they are in that section of, and then we can run it, send them over there, and then rerun the numbers to see how it impacts that, that building.
John, it seems to me that we had a document, too, and I find here right now, that showed a sort of blind neighborhood, maybe I'm imagining this, or if we chose one of the options, the number of kids who would receive special services, kids who are low SES, special ed, ELL.
Yep.
And this would be, it's part of our document, is we want to make sure that we don't unintentionally segregate schools. But I think that's important, too. If you have a higher population of kids who receive special services, you need more space at that building than you might at a similarly sized building where there aren't the same number of kids who need special services. And so I think that's something we need to consider. But what I heard at the end of our last board meeting, a suggestion at least, was that combination of things, as Mr. Munger said, we need to keep looking at boundaries, and I don't think this is the last adjustment to make, but the suggestion that it was the cylinder made was, could we have, for the what, at this point, just address the needs of Gibbs and Elton Hills, and focus on how we can efficaciously move kids from those buildings, and then lead the other schools to the next round.
You were asking about that information. It's in the February 20th board docs. There's a summary of demographic changes, and this by total students free and reduced English learner, special education, ethnicity, and it lists before, after, and what the potential changes.
Was that, and then the February 20th, that's not the public link?
No. It's, I think it's, I think it's a chapter, a document, read, some of the changes, option two, that's.
So I guess, essentially, you're saying is, you'd almost like to see the what adjusted on a couple different timelines, so by 2018 timeline, that's a very small set of changes of possibly a couple of schools. And since the overall documents, a guiding document for boundaries, it could have a different timeline in the what as well for 2019, that is more district encompassing.
You could just put in the what, adjust boundaries for building A and building B.
And I guess at this point, again, I'm keenly aware that we have to let our buildings and our families know two months ago what changes are being recommended. I think we have to make a decision, a really good decision, as quickly as we possibly can, and I think it might be better at this point to focus on those two sides, with the assumption that we'll need to continue to look at other sites in the future.
I think that would be a good change to the document, and an additional what would be is that the adjustment 2019 doesn't re-affect the kids who are adjusted in 2018. You would want to adjust them two years in a row.
Additionally, the what could also include the issue of open enrollment and attendance exceptions. Is that something that is going to occur, or is something that's been discussed, would be nice to look into? Can we actually include that as part of the what? Or some here in the guiding change document? And then further, I'm not certain, and I could certainly be enlightened, Elton Hills sits at 150, Gibbs at 115. I'm not really even sure why Gibbs is a part of the discussion. Elton Hills clearly, I mean, there's Bishop at 144, Pinewood 132, Falwell 122, I mean, there's several schools, much more, I don't want to say over capacity, and I think that's a potential misuse, because all of our schools are at the board-directed classroom cap. So no schools over capacity in that regard.
I think, I think we were looking at Gibbs, because Sunset Terrace is only at 80, well, 192% capacity now. I mean, I think originally, we were looking at, where could we move students from schools that are somewhat overcrowded to places where schools aren't overcrowded, or whether there are going to be open classrooms? Because it really makes absolutely no sense to be having empty classrooms sitting anywhere in this area.
Yeah, and I think also, too, we were factoring in the continued growth that we're seeing at Gibbs, that we were trying to address that as well.
Just preemptive.
I don't know if any of Gibbs is one of those schools that has music for art on the cart. I think at one time, they used to, I don't think they are anymore, but.
They have, one teacher has a room for music, and then the second teacher is on a cart. Yeah, but they do have a designated art room.
But at Elton Hills?
No, they have.
Everything's on a cart?
No, no, everything has its own room, and then some. Yeah, they have space.
One of the other documents you have on February 20th is a section comparison. It's the final document, and I think it's important to note, I think in one, in option one, we would have reduced one section at Gibbs. Option two, we wouldn't have reduced any sections at Elton Hills. Gibbs wasn't part of option two. As a former building principal, when I hear the, our building is too crowded, it's not necessarily that the classrooms are crowded themselves, because we're all within target across the district. I think what they're talking about, I know what they're talking about, is there's not space to take a small group, for example, for interventions to take a small group. So as a building principal, if we're not going to free up classroom space, then I wouldn't want to lose my kids. If we're going to just take a few kids here and there, and I'm not gaining space.
And I think, yeah, that's a little part of concern for me, I think there's a belief by some that when we do move boundaries, that means my class sizes are going to go down, and that's, may not be, it may be and it may not be. And I gave the example earlier that by moving kids out of Jefferson, that allowed us to reduce one section, I think they went from 25 to 29 per class, but they were still under the 31 target. So I hope not all of our teachers leave by moving kids out, means your class sizes are going to be smaller, because that, that may not be. I do have another topic, this is the floor plan of Bishop and Elton Hills, as you'll see, they're pretty much the exact same floor plan. I think when I looked at Bishop, it was about 26 or 29 more students than Elton Hills.
Less, less.
Plus. And then they had four additional adults working in that building compared to Bishop. So, yeah, I mean, Elton Hills had 20-some more than Bishop. And then I think four more teachers than Bishop.
So I'd like to share some of the comments that we got. So I'd like to share some of the comments that we got, Jim and I got when we were at Elton Hills and listening to the staff. One of the things they mentioned was that there was a classroom, I think, that had thirty or thirty-one students in it plus a child in a wheelchair. And it made it really difficult to, they just didn't have enough space to really negotiate that well. I was told, and I will be happy to be corrected on this, that there is a kindergarten classroom in what used to be a playroom without any windows. And then English language learners were in very, very small spaces. Special education shares a room with another class in their room. There wasn't any real place to take students who were having behavior issues at that time. So it's the small things like you were talking about. Reading Core and Gate, short on spaces for those, although I see on the map that Gate shares the music room. Kids won't fit in the gym.
I was just gonna say, I think these titles are reversed. I think Bishop should be the one that says Elton and Elton's the other one.
Oh.
Because what you're saying about kindergarten.
Yeah, thank you.
You're right. There's one without a, without a note.
Yeah, the interior. And then the other thing they were talking about, and this sounds like a small thing, but in terms, just in terms of how kids are moving around, some classrooms, their lockers aren't anywhere near their rooms. And that that makes it really difficult when you've got kids that cross purposes. We had the pleasure of being there just as school was getting out at the end of the day and it was.
I think most of those things you listed could be said for any of our elementary sites. Any of our elementary sites. Absolutely.
And then they talked about, then they talked about, you know, they can't get all the kids in the cafeteria at the same time, I mean, for like a school or something or whatever. But that's also which is not ideal. And then, do you remember, Jim, I'm talking about the three drinking fountains? Where there are three drinking fountains and there are two girls and two boys bathrooms and one of the fountains that has a bottle filler on, the fountain itself doesn't work if the bottle filler is on at the same time. I don't know if that's necessarily for any of our.
Of course, of course. You go try it right out there.
Yeah.
So Mike, if I may, and Julie, you may have a few additional items you want to present. Certainly, when you meet with principals and staff at individual schools, these are the type of things that you may be aware of and have probably already been discussed, which have nothing to do necessarily with caps and or boundary changes, but just age of facility and water cabinetry issues, things like that.
I mean, I mean, when I look at what we have currently at Elton Hills and what's proposed, we still have the same number of classrooms. There are no classrooms that are being freed up for anything else. So, and we don't always know that if we're going to be able to take two kids out of every classroom to make it easy, every kid, they don't, they don't necessarily fit in the right places in terms of where we live in the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm just really wondering if, how much relief this is actually going to give to the students and the staff at Elton Hills next year?
Well, I, I think you bring up a good point. And the reason for giving me both schools is because they're both a higher end as far as capacity and use the MBE standards. And if you look at the class sizes, I think they're fairly comparable as well. I haven't heard a word from Bishop staff about their being overcrowded, but I have from Elton Hills. That's why I bring up the point. Boundary adjustments don't always mean class sizes go down. And you make up a good point, Julie, is by moving kids out, you're still not going to have more space in the hallway to, you know, to do one-on-one, two. I mean, it doesn't make your space bigger because it's still within the parameters of the structure. It does make a difference, however, when you're trying to do lunch, when they're out of reset. I mean, there's times when it does pay off, have fewer kids in your building, early dismissal times, things like that, it does make a difference with you. But during the day, during instruction time, you're, they're probably not going to really see much difference unless you take a big, big chunk of kids out there.
I mean, I'm looking at this, this chart of the demographic changes with the free and reduced and special ed and all that, and it looks like there is just a very slight difference in those categories with, with Elton Hills. English learner gets what, a little bit more from twenty-two point four to twenty-three point six percent. Special education goes from seventeen point one percent to seventeen point two percent. And I'm assuming that could change depending on people moving into the neighborhood. Ethnicity before the change is at fifty-two point three percent and fifty-one percent like after the change. So to me, none of those numbers are really, really earth shattering. And I mean, I know when you were looking at it, you weren't looking at to try and keep this balanced, but it kind of happened this way.
Yeah, we actually were. I think my statement I made was misunderstood. There were people on social media saying the only reason we were doing boundary adjustments is to balance the diversity of our schools. And if you remember back in twenty fourteen, we started that, not so much in the school of trying to make our district-wide office school more diverse. And then that, as we went through the process, that, remember, we were going to do all, took on choice schools north and choice schools south, and then families said we don't want to go to neighborhood schools, and we kind of went away from that. But my statement was, we do, we did look at, we looked at that, we looked at free and reduced, we looked at how it impacted the L, and we looked at all of those things. But that we did make boundary adjustments for that purpose, it was because of overcrowding.
Right. And at that point, I mean, I think the twenty fourteen school year and twenty fifteen, that was when we started expanding the vision from that stage to try and bring a little bit of a balance into that building as well. I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking right now is looking at a lot of this is that there doesn't look like there's going to be a huge difference in the number of students in any one building. I think the staff at Gibbs said, you know, fifty students out of nine hundred, whatever it is, eight hundred, it's not a huge change. But on the other hand, are there going to be fifty kids moving in over the summer and the fall? And that's what I thought they would, could really end up feeling some stress.
That's why part of our fifth option, we tried to have the option down the table, was to really look at, especially in Gibbs and Elton Hills, look at exception to attendance and open enrollment. So you could remove all or most of those kids to have space for those families that aren't moving in that probably, from parents saying, we should be able to go to our neighborhood school and not somebody from somewhere else. I don't disagree with that.
So, I mean, we have two things, open enrollment and then you have exception to attendance. So I'm just wondering, how many students are on exception to attendance that?
We do have all that data and we look to see, would we overwhelm any one school or grade level if we said everybody needs to go back to their neighborhood school? We did it separately for relocations, which is, I want to finish, I moved and I want to finish, and daycare exceptions. And so we do have that data, it's.
I think one of them was seventy-nine and the other one was.
That was with open enrollment.
Yeah, with open enrollment, seventy-nine, and the other one was like close to a hundred kids.
So legally, when, when we're considering open enrollment, if a, if a family says, I would like to open enroll from the Chatfield and I would like to have my, my children at , say, Gibbs, unless we have actually closed Gibbs for open enrollment, then we have to honor that request. Is that correct?
Yes and no. On the form, they have to, they put first, second, third choice. We can, which, there was a time where while we did close Gibbs, so then they had to go to their second choice. So you do have a little flexibility, but the parents will argue about this, they, they have more, maybe rights is not the right word to use, but somebody open enrollment has more advantages than somebody actually living in the city of Rochester.
Or somebody living in Rochester.
Right.
Is there any board policy around that?
What?
Is there any board policy around when a school is closed from a capacity point of view?
Yeah, the board can do a resolution and say, we're closing school A for open enrollment and exception.
But is it a policy that says, okay, if a school reaches this capacity, it's just closed?
As far as exceptions?
Yeah.
The policy says, provided there's space. So when we get an exception, we review that individually. If there's, you know, three seats in each of the sections before we would get to the board cap, then we would allow it.
Even though that school may already be at a hundred and thirty percent capacity?
Because the capacity has to do with the total square feet in a building.
It's a model.
Yeah.
It helps you understand so you still have some space left over for lunchrooms and break out rooms. We're just really taxed, yeah, we're just really taxed on the extra spaces right now.
Well, I think to your point, Mark, it's, it's, if we just flat said, no, you can't open enrollment, and if they challenge us on it, we'd have to be able to say we're full. And if we can say, you want a third grade, well, they're at our district cap in every class in third grade, so we have a right to not open ledger open at all.
And you could pull back on policy, essentially states that.
Yeah.
We have twenty-nine kids at Elton Hills that are on exception, either for relocation or daycare. And we have a few more close to sixty at Gibbs.
Do we know what schools those sets of students would have been at?
Schools and grade levels, for each of them.
Okay. And, and why they, I mean, do they choose, is it just because the daycare provider they want happens to live in that neighborhood?
Maybe it's when the child was an infant, they started bringing the child to a home daycare.
Okay.
And then they continued to do that and didn't want to switch to SAC or kids come first or something like that. So it's a long-term relationship that they don't want to break.
Let me get back to our document and what I've heard myself say, and I'm not sure that they agree with it, is maybe for the purposes of this argument, this argument, this discussion, could we look at just Elton Hills and Gibbs? And do we agree that that was going to be one of our dominators or not? No?
I don't know why we couldn't, since it says part of, like I said, the twenty eighteen.
Pardon?
Sorry. I don't know why we couldn't put that in the what.
Okay, Kate, because this could be a really big discussion about all the buildings and philosophical issues, or it could be just, do we make adjustments or recommend adjustments for those two sites?
Well, on, yeah, on, I mean, on the what right now, it's just designed to be implemented in the fall of twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Which gives us like a year or maybe a little less than a year to figure out exactly how we might do this for twenty nineteen. Because my question, I thought this discussion was going to be primarily about what happens next year.
Well, that, as I, when I wrote that, I said this was our recommendation.
Okay.
So I think what, what the board, even though you can't vote, the board has to have consensus, do you want to make some type of boundary adjustments for next year? If the answer is yes, then we continue forward on the guiding change document for next school year. Or if you want to make much larger boundary adjustments, catching the majority, more of the schools, but wait until the nineteen-twenty school year, we would still ask that you create a guiding change document, but it, it would look a little bit, I mean, the what would look a little different.
If we do nothing, how many classrooms would be empty next year, Churchill and Hoover?
Four for sure, but we do have a plan for that. We are putting MSP on, on the market and we have to find a home for those individuals. So majority then would go to those two sites, using that space, at least for a year. So it wouldn't sit on view. It would just be used for, because as we look at our, working our budget for next year and looking to make some budget reductions, by moving those staff out of that building, we could reduce some positions and probably save a little money on energy. We probably don't have to run it at the temperatures we're running it now when people are in there. So we're going to move them out of there anyway because of savings for the district. But, so if those classrooms aren't available, we'll find somewhere else for them to house.
Kate, the other, the other thing I was considering was, at some point, we need to make a decision about which parcel of land we will use, the three parcels, if any, or we will buy land and it will be in a different location. Because I would hate to start adjusting boundaries right now, only two years from now, say, well, this is what's going to happen. But if you know where the location of the school might be, that would help maybe anticipate making some boundary changes that might not affect as many, many kids.
Yeah, and that's what the task force that will be in the process of being organized will do that for. I mean, we've been, we've been thinking northwest, but as you, I think we also presented that we're thinking maybe in ten years from now, we're going to need a new high school. Well, maybe it makes sense to have a high school in all four quadrants. Then that would maybe impact where you would build a new middle school because you would want that feeding the new high school in the southwest. So I was a betting person, if I say elementary, probably northwest, but the middle school would, that's kind of the error, but that's something, that's worth it.
But to Jane's point, you said we could either go large or small, small being looking at Elton Hills and Gibbs, with the option, not option, with the understanding that perhaps for an additional guiding change process from this, looking at district-wide boundary changes for some later date.
Yes, that would be my suggestion.
So are you asking for consensus or what were you looking for? How were you hoping to?
Yeah, I, I think before we look forward on the what column, we need to know, are we talking a couple schools or addressing districts? And then also next year or the following year?
Because we have classrooms that will be available over next year, so that's one more time in the staffs, and I suggest maybe that we look at moving students from Elton Hills to Churchill Hoover schools for next fall. That we look at moving students from Gibbs to Sunset Terrace for next fall. And for both schools, we'd look at rescinding the exception to attendance and some of the other exceptions. Thanks. That I understand you don't need to go, you can just do that, the district can just do that. I think for Gibbs, the biggest issue is that they, the staff there is pretty convinced and I think with good reason, that over the next school year, their numbers are continuing to grow. And so if we can move some students out of their short term and at minimum, have the kids who are there on exception to attendance go back to their home schools, that's going to take a little bit of the pressure off. It's a big building, but I think that they're, again, anticipating that it's going to get the population's going to continue to increase. I understand that Perry Bishop especially is really overcrowded, that Elton Hills should be able to make do, but I keep looking at the numbers, it's close to a hundred and fifty percent of the kids who should ideally be there. And despite the fact that their classroom sizes aren't bigger than any other classes, when you have that many bodies in a space that is not designed for that many bodies, it makes it tough. It gets hot, it gets crowded, it gets noisy, there's no place to take kids. There's no place to take kids when they're having their milk fountain. There is, the library is used constantly for everything. Teachers are leaving there. They love that school. They love their students. They love the neighborhood. But the stress is getting to them. And we've seen that over the last few years.
Are you referencing Bishop now?
I'm sorry, Elton Hills. I'm sorry, it's probably, oh, we've got 55%, 55% of the kids on free lunches, Christ lunch. We've got kids who maybe we need more and they, you know, food shelves and closets. And I just, I don't understand why we wouldn't do something, especially about that building for next fall when we have the ability to do it. We can't change the whole school, but we can make it a little bit better. And when the staff for years has been saying, help us. I know I have a bias, but when staff speaks, I think we need to listen. And they have been saying this for years. And they don't want to lose any of their kids. But they keep saying it's not the ideal environment for teaching or for learning. And we think that the kids deserve better.
Well, when all is said and done, and I agree with perhaps moving forward just the two schools. Yeah, I don't, I think important for us to not, well, to differentiate between a school such as Elton Hills where the caps are not being exceeded. I don't, I, are the, is it your impression or did any teacher communicate that the students aren't getting what these are? Or the students at Elton Hills, they're not receiving what students at lesser populated, not lesser populated, but the schools that are less.
Overcrowded?
Well.
Maybe less populated.
Okay, less populated. And that's where I, you know, I'm all in favor of Elton Hills for most definitely. We really don't know the impact regarding Gibbs until we do the open enrollment exception to attendance. And we know the numbers there. If we indeed kind of, you know, hold fast to that, those, that 60 spaces immediately at Gibbs. I'd like to know, you know, just out of curiosity, if Gibbs presently is at 118%, how many students moves the percentage up by, you know, if we were to look at worst-case scenario, if Elton Hills is at 150, I'm not suggesting that's where we move all of our schools to, but how many students are required to significantly begin to move Gibbs to, oh, we're really concerned now? Because I wonder, we're saying we know there's construction occurring. It's an unknown as to how many students may actually enroll at Gibbs because of the construction. If so, if we have that data, then what percentage, you know, how many students, you know, hypothetically speaking, would possibly enroll? And what would that take our percentage capacity to? I mean, it's a great unknown, whereas we do have unknown at Elton Hills. Not to further just drag this conversation out. I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with Elton Hills and the restricting open enrollment and the attendance to exception or, yeah, attendance exceptions.
So it's kind of along those lines. You know, I guess I believe I previously suggested this where what is two-pronged for 2018, 2019? And, you know, I agree with Jane where, to me, 2018 should just quickly be Elton Hills. And then 2019, when we're at a larger district discussion, I think Gibbs should be addressed in 2019 with a larger district. Because by then, the facility task force is going to have a much more solid idea of where a facility is going. And those boundary changes could take that new location into account, wherever that is. Just long-term planning, I just think those timelines work better. And to Don's point, with the, you know, rescindance of the exception policy and so forth with Gibbs, that should help next year just in itself. By these numbers on the sheets, I'm not seeing as big of a need Gibbs as I am at Elton Hills. So from a changing guidance document point of view, I'd suggest a 2018 target and a 2019 target.
Do you want to give any, Bishop's is 6% lower than Elton Hills? I know you're not hearing from them, but.
Well, Superintendent, you raise an excellent point. You know, as a board, do we want to set thresholds? You know, and that's what it comes down to, you know, or do we wait until we start hearing from and then, oh, we need to do something? You know, I think that's a very good point you raised there. Currently, there's a numeric difference of 21 students between Elton Hills and Bishop in terms of total student enrollment. Would 21 have such a significant impact to where you would begin to hear from teachers? I don't know.
I don't think we have the numbers for Bishop, for instance, on there. I'm not seeing that he's done. There are kids who are in EO class and it's more for Bishop. EO and special ed. I mean, it's another one of those things that it takes more space. You're going to have kids who need to get pulled out. It takes space. For that matter, there are kids who are getting special help with math. They're reading. They need space. And I understand sometimes, you know, at Elton Hills, at least they go to the library. Probably they do it Bishop as well. But sometimes it depends a little bit on your population in terms of how well you're able to use the space sheet out. Again, we're getting back to, we want to address Perry Bishop right now also. Or stay with the two schools that we were in unusual, or two of those schools are unusual, actually.
Well, I guess I, you know, I sort of agree that Perry Bishop's position itself, it suggests the convenience in the classroom shopping that helped Elton Hills.
It's a class.
You know, there's no close, easy option for an easy adjustment for Perry Bishop, unfortunately.
Jackie, what kind of information do you have? That's a really broad question. Let me start. Do you have the numbers for exception to attendance and daycare at Elton Hills and then also at Gibbs?
A few pieces of data. So at Elton Hills, we have 31 kids that are on exception for childcare and 18 that are there because of relocation. So those are all exception to attendance. 31 plus 18.
Do you have any open enrollment at all?
We do. We have 10 students who are open. And then Gibbs, there are 27 children there on daycare exception. 36 children there on relocation exception and 28 children who are open enrolled.
Can you define that relocation piece?
So they started their elementary career at Gibbs and kindergarten. In second grade, their parents moved to the Pinewood attendance area. They can apply to stay and finish.
Okay, yeah. And do we transmit those students?
No, no. Any exception is, we do not.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So in other words, if you wanted to force the issue.
Yeah, we could make a little impact by sending them all.
Send them all.
Send them back to their home.
And I would argue the, I would start with relocation because eventually the kids are likely going to have to make a transition to a middle school. And sometimes we'll allow them to get through fifth grade and then we'll get a request. Well, we'd like to go to Kellogg because all their friends, when they haven't transitioned to the Willow attendance area previously. So for me, relocation is a little more of a luxury where daycare exception could create some more hardship for them. Not that it's can't be overcome, but it would be more of an issue.
So what, I think the way that my brain is working, although not very well right now, but I'm trying, is that there is a way to potentially prioritize the methods in which we impact attendance. And so from the numbers that Ms. Peterson just gave us, if we, if we, if the board said, we're going to look at a list of priority measures and we did those things, we said we are, we're going to take out the relocation, we're going to take out the daycare, we're going to take out the open enrollment. At Elton Hills and Gibbs, we'd have an impact of Ms. Mann, you know.
Elton Hills and Gibbs?
Well, just one of the other.
She's adding one.
Thank you.
The impact that at Gibbs is about 11% of the school and Elton Hills is 11.2%.
So I do trust in cautiousness, though, on the open enrollment piece. I hate to say, yeah, we can do that automatically. That's what I said earlier. We said you can't come because we're full and we're not at our cap at that grade level. I don't know if that, that.
Right. So we have the, the open enrollment piece of law versus our policy, correct? And so law would.
But except for attendance, you have total control of saying you have to go back. So I just don't think that whole number, that we may be able to keep all of them out of there. I think we could, we could attempt to do that. But the open enrollment people may be a little gippy on some of them.
Well, I think, looking at strictly from a numbers point too, if we have students who are open enrolling from other districts who say, well, okay, I can't go to Gibbs, that's fine. I'll just go back to my home school district. And then we lost not only the students, but all of the aid that comes with that student, which could end up being an even bigger impact on the district than we would want.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff to juggle.
Yeah.
I wasn't paying attention before, sorry. The kids who are going to Elton Hills and Gibbs because of daycare, that's exception to attendance. Right.
And, yeah, another category of exception to attendance is if you started at that school, you want to, even though you moved, you could stay at the school you started.
And that would just be for parents who are already having exception to attendance at those schools for, because of location, relocation.
But what you could do is you could close both buildings to exception to attendance of anybody applying and say, it's not going to be approved, it'll be pulled.
Even if the class sizes are well figured out?
Yeah, you control that piece.
Okay.
It's just an open enrollment thing. There's stats you may have to bind by.
And then just to back up, because we have so much information in front of us and much appreciation to administration for getting us information upon information upon information. In terms of, and I'm not even sure where to find it, so I'm kind of looking at you, John. How many, between option one or option two, how many students are we talking about moving in those areas? Or even just give me the Elton numbers, I guess. Is it all about this one or option two?
There's a totally different neighborhood based on the feedback we've gotten. All those people being so close that could see it, we said, fine, we'll go across Elton and find a totally different neighborhood.
Exactly.
And then we got over 100, I kind of went down the river.
And that's option.
Okay.
So how many? But we're not too.
Option one is.
Oh, okay.
Well, I sort of had the impression that we weren't even considering that one or. I mean, we didn't vote on it, but maybe that was just.
He voted option two, I'm like, well.
No, no.
Option two for Elton Hills was minus 30 students and Gibbs was 165 students.
Can you say those again, please?
Option two, Elton Hills was 108 and Gibbs was 65.
And that's where I think we kind of said, you know, if we dealt with the exceptions, it's almost the same number at Gibbs specifically. So we could handle that one and take that off the table and self-manage that one and just follow policy.
I am also a little hesitant to pursue changes at Gibbs, knowing that we potentially may, might build a new school there and knowing that those students could be impacted again.
Some people adjusting twice in that board.
And I, and I think actually that slice that was on option, well, the same option at Gibbs, I think that slice is what we'll put forward.
For sure they have a middle school and high school because I told you they were Kellogg Century. I can't flip back to January.
I think, I think I forgot one. Slice flip back. It's a slice. Okay.
Is, so you would just be interested then in tightening things up for Elton Hills and Gibbs in terms of daycare and/or relocation and/or open enrollment? Or would you want to also do that in some of the larger schools, the other schools like Bishop and?
As I said the last week, the, our recommendation number five was not adjust boundaries and let us just address, try to reduce that Gibbs and Elton through exception to attendance and as many open enrollment as we can. But come back with a more extensive boundary adjustments and pick up Bishop. And I still think we need to find a way to get more students into Riverside. I know there was, Bamber didn't want to lose that group of kids that lived right next to Riverside. And somebody that were around in 2014, we were doing the same thing at that time. And then the reason we didn't move into Bamber because of the impact their free reduce was going to go too low and they wouldn't qualify for title anymore. So we dropped that one off because at that time, we said they went by several schools to get to their school under us. But we didn't make it in 2014 because we didn't want Bamber to lose their title. But they're no longer a title school. So that's why we thought, right next to Riverside, it's probably better for them, for their families to actually engage and be part of the school if it's right nearby versus busing them to Bamber. I know Bamber doesn't want to lose those kids. They do a great job with those kids, but that was the thinking behind that. And trying to get more kids in Riverside and also trying to have a group of kids go to school that's closer to where they live.
So were you just suggesting our recommendation number five was just with open enrollment and relocation, it was not daycare?
No. All exceptions, all exceptions and then as many open enrollment as we can. I just don't want anybody to walk out there thinking we're going to be able to have all of them out.
Right.
We can do as many as we could. And come back with another boundary adjustments for the early next fall. Have the plan in place and then implement it for the mid and beginning of the year.
So if we, so beyond the scope of the board's governance, if the board went with your recommendation five and we just dealt with the things that we have some control over in terms of numbers, it is not up to us to make decisions at what happens at the buildings. So, but I do, if you, with anyone be interested in speaking to, do you have thought solutions, ideas to work within the existing space and the existing students to perhaps alleviate some of the issues?
Yeah, one of the things we talked about is trying to work with some of the buildings and help them be a little more creative with how they're currently using their space. Yeah, for example, Elton Hills right now has a. Yeah, for example, Elton Hills right now has a separate music room and a separate art room, or some schools share a space or put one of those on a cart. So there is, there is some flexibility if you want to try to be creative and think outside the box. I know it does inconvenience, it's not ideal, but we have, I won't say several, but we have some of our elementary that are doing that right now just because of space.
So to me, the choice, I mean, there's choices, right? We can, we can move 100 students, or we can put art on a cart. And that impacts every student, but it impacts them in a different way. I think that's, I almost feel like we're getting glasses. Is it this lens or this lens? This lens or this lens? Because there's, you know, and the more information we get, which again is terrific, it, it really shows us that it's not just about class sizes, it's not just about the building spaces and the classrooms. And, you know, we've talked about the art and the music and the gym and the cafe and the special ed areas and what they need and pullout room. I mean, it's, it, my head is still attached, right? I mean, it's a lot. And I, I think what I'm trying to say, which obviously everybody at this table gets, is this is, this is a lot of information and to try to make the best decision isn't easy. And, but, you know, that's why we get to pay big bucks, right? To make these really hard decisions, school board members?
Well, I kind, I would like to know how, first of all, it's more than just convenient to have a new day in art on a cart, because the kids are not going to get what they need from a curriculum. Especially if you have a thin art room lately with all this kind of, most currently remember the art space and the kinds of things that came suited and went with it. How does that, how would that impact the teachers' prep time? Because they have, the special areas are used to giving a prep time, but if they're having art and music in their classroom, then...
My understanding, well, obviously we wouldn't be able to violate contract. So the teacher who are doing that, that, they may be in a teacher's classroom, but she's not, probably not even in that room.
Okay.
She's not responsible for the kids, and the music teacher comes in and...
No, I wasn't suggesting responsibility, but just in terms of things that she might want to be, or he might want to be doing in the classroom, that it's more difficult to, you're still about all your kids at once, that's all.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not ideal. I mean, if I'm an art teacher, I'd love to have it in a classroom and have it set up and the kids walk in for art versus we put it in a cart and wheel and bound and coming in. I mean, it's not ideal.
Well, I think the other thing we have to think about is, yes, it's super important about the adults, you know, and what is the best teaching environment for the adult, but what about the child? I mean, is it, is it less intrusive? So we're at the point now in the school year where students have already started talking about what's about next year and where they're going to be and some of that kind of stuff. So is it less intrusive to ask an adult to go on a cart and go to rooms and teach the students inside the classroom and be creative about it? Or is it less intrusive to ask 100 students to, or however many students, to change boundaries? You know, not move, not any of that, but to move to a different school?
Well, I mean, Mike was suggesting that the, that Elton Hills could maybe have music and art on a cart.
Absolutely.
But I would be more inclined to really ask the teachers if that's something that would actually feel beneficial to them to do that. I mean, they may decide that it's not worth it for the kids to give up those spaces.
Yeah, that was, that was just Deborah asked, that was just an example. I think, you know, as the adult, you have to weigh, is it better leaving it as it is? Or is it better to do it this way, you know, this way? I think that's something they have to ask themselves. But it's, it's, you know, my grandfather, a long time ago, tried to tell me, "You always have to look for the positive in everything." I mean, this, this discussion is complicated, there's a lot of information, as Deborah mentioned, but that's why we're going to have to build buildings, because we're in this predicament. And I'd rather be in this predicament than some of my colleagues who are trying to close schools because their enrollment is dropping. So this is a good, it's a problem, but it's a good problem to have. But it really just demonstrates why we're going to have to owe the voters for money to build new schools and, and so...
So my can, and I'm sure you're able to, and Cabinet as well, assure Miss Workman that staff is considered when these changes occur. I mean, whether it's art on a cart or, or whatever, these conversations aren't, or decisions aren't being made without, number one, having an awareness of, of contract, but also with a concern for students. And I guess I'm okay with knowing that you and the Cabinet, you're keenly aware of that, like Janie just said a few moments ago, you know? Yeah, on one hand, we can, what's better? Is it more convenient to, you know, make sure, well, I don't want to necessarily offer what's better. I think we exist for the students. And what I'm hearing is, you know, based on how things are, it may require consideration for our students to maybe modify a room, what was a room that had been previously dedicated for a single purpose, maybe repurposed. And, and not that we as a board can begin to tell you how to manage the school or what should occur in the school, but I think if we're simply needing to hear that you looked into it, it's something that you're keenly aware of and, and what is being provided is indeed, you know, consistent with quality education purposes, I'm good with that.
And then we don't, we don't direct schools and colleges with that. We, for example, one of the principals we met with through the staffing process, they really liked to have a room for this. They have a maker's space, which is, fits their building really well, but it's a classroom that could be used for what they say they need. So we said, "You could give up this space to have that." I mean, just, we just give them, encourage them to think outside what they're currently doing to try to be creative. We don't say, "You're going to have to put art on a cart," or "You need to shut down your maker's space and do this." But we just try to help them to think of different ways to use the space that they have.
And I think it's also important to note that at the district level, we have art teachers, music teachers, PE teachers, and media specialists that come in and help design the staffing specialist schedule for the elementary. So they help us design what days of the week will are to mute, you know, be at this building or music. And a lot of that conversation and that schedule is built because, oh, these, this class, you know, this building, art and music share a room. Or this building, you know, you have this, that, or the other. So to be very aware of what you have going on in the building. And we have teachers that do that at the district level. And then at the site level, the teachers are involved in building the schedule as far as which class goes on A day or B day.
I love the idea of being creative with space. Really, it's really important to, I've been in apartments before visiting families where they have one bedroom apartment and they have the kitchen table and that's where they eat and where they call laundry and where they do homework and where they clean fish and where they pot plants and where they change the baby. And it's creative, they can use that space for all those things. If someone auctioned that family another bedroom, I think they'd take it. We have space. And I'm, I'm not understanding why we're not jumping at the opportunity to use it. Hoover's going to have classroom space. We can send some of the kids to a place where maybe they do have an art room or a music room, or places where they can go and talk to, to staff or bigger spaces maybe for kids with current EL classes or in special ed. And I don't know if Hoover and Churchill do, but I know that they have room right now. I am just not understanding why we wouldn't do that. And I'm hearing that we're maybe not going in that direction, I don't go along with the rest of the board, but I got to tell you, I just don't understand it.
Jean, I can tell you my thoughts on that and as I, as I sit on the fence, especially in regards to Elton Hills. And I'm a, my family is a Churchill Hoover family. And so we know that somebody made a mistake along the way and just built Elton Hills and Hoover two darn close to each other. And it's messed us up for years and it...
You wanted to have Hoover, don't you?
No, I don't.
Go ahead.
So, so those folks, those families in the middle, I get, I get that they could, they can walk to Hoover, they could walk to Elton Hills, there's that sweet spot, you know, right where you, and it's actually the neighborhood I used to live before we moved closer northeast. So for me, I, I feel that tension and I absolutely respect what you're saying about having room. When I look at the options, the geographical options, on option one, to take that, I'm going to call it the, what do you call that one, John? The leg? What do you have names for all your shapes? The one that's closer to Hoover?
I called it the street name, but I can't even remember all the streets. You need someone creative, John.
It kind, well, it kind of looks like Bart Simpson. It's got a square head.
Oh, that's great.
So I would assume that those students probably would, would be in the walking boundary to Hoover. Maybe I'm wrong, but, so I look at that and I say, "Well, that would be good because they're walkers, so they could walk to the other building." But I understand they've been walking to Elton Hills. So I have conflicting feelings about that. So when we came up, when we came to option two, and again, appreciation for administration for continuing to give us options, I really felt like a little bit about the squeaky wheel. And the squeaky wheel was the parents who said, "We don't want to go to Hoover, we want to stay at Elton Hills, take a different neighborhood." And so option two came. And some would say, "Well, those kids are already on the bus, just keep driving, just drive them over here instead." But there's part of me in my heart that says, "Well, just because you're on the bus doesn't mean you want to stay on the bus." And where are the parents in that section south of Indian Heights Park? And are those families more disenfranchised in other ways that they aren't having their voices heard about being on the bus? So that is my, part of my hesitation is I, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with either one of those sections of Elton Hills moving over to Churchill Hoover. I just don't know that I'm, I have enough, and I'm not going to say enough information because Lord knows you've got plenty of information, but I just think that's a really tough, for me, to pick one of those neighborhoods to move because of where they are.
And I would say, my perspective is, we gave the first option, time to come here, listen to me, say some things to us. We heard it, we tried to redo it, but we didn't hear from option two people yet. We didn't give them that opportunity. Now if we come up with an option three, I would like, I would like them to have an opportunity. And so that just stretches it out another level.
Right.
And then I'm looking at, you want a budget from me on May 22nd. We're done, you can't, we can't do it.
And I would agree with Deborah. I do think that there are some of the reasons that we may not hear as much from those families is because those are the voices that we don't hear.
Those are the ones who are using the kitchen table for 17 different purposes.
The other thing though, and I understand that there's certain amount of trauma in hearing that your school's going to be switched. Well, we do it all the time. Families do it all the time. My family's done it all the time. We've been places where they've been redistricted. It's not a terminal problem. Kids adjust and, you know, we tell families, "You need to get your kid immunized or get some sort of an exception." And we don't ask for their permission, we just say, "This is what we're doing because it's the right thing to do." And I, I get it that they're parents or kids are going to be upset. I, I understand that, I want to empathize, but I'm at the point right now where I'm thinking, "Get over it. We're going to give your kid an amazing education. The difference between Elton Hills and Hoover on a bus is two and a half minutes." I drove it and I drive slowly. Two and a half minutes more on the bus. When we, you know, when kids go to middle school, they're switching to a different school, different friends and different people. If their families build a different house or move someplace else, they're, they're moving. Kids move here all the time from other cities and they adjust. When we build new buildings, we're going to have a whole lot of kids being told, "There's a new district, you're going to..." I was in the district when we built Little Creek, when Century opened, when Riverside and Gage opened. People were told, "Your kid's going to a different school." And they did just fine. And I, I have trouble believing that people are going to be completely traumatized if we're saying, "Right, take your kid through school with too many kids and put them in school with ours."
So maybe a minute ago, there may have been the hope of consensus, but how would you, are we ending at six? Is that a hardened ending time?
It's not.
Because I actually have a body that's going to have to teach at 6:30.
Well, that means you might have to go to the rest of the room.
And the only reason I asked, I mean, the superintendent had asked for direction so that at the March 20th meeting, we could have something to examine. I mean, I'll, if, I'll just reiterate, and I can't speak for Mark, but Mark and I basically are in the same position. Elton Hills, 18, district-wide, 19. I'd like to hear from the other board members, ask where, if it's okay with each change, so we can at least know where we may be or where we are.
I would support what you said. I would be very much in favor of moving Elton Hills to Churchill Hoover. Or else maybe, maybe could develop a whole lot of career ed courses on mental health for adults, which might not be a bad idea anyway, or for kids. But I think, you know, if we, if we move Elton Hills to Churchill Hoover and still do these other things that were suggested with Gibbs and Elton Hills, I think that will help a lot. The second thing is, is, and we haven't really, we've kind of skirted this issue, the question of, are parents just totally loyal to their school and they don't want to have their kids move anywhere? Or are parents upset because, "You're going to move my kids to this school. If you're going to move my kid to this, this, or this school, I'd be okay." I mean, that's a different discussion for a different day, but I mean, Gary's kind of been pounding on this for almost eight years now about, "What are we doing to really promote and sell our neighborhood schools?" Because we do a great job with our choice schools, but there are so many amazing things that are going in all of our buildings and you get this kind of over the fence thing, "Well, I heard that school X with, oh my gosh, blah, 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 blah." And most of the time, there might be kernel of truth in it, but an awful lot of the times it's just blown out of proportion because I think we have great schools everywhere. And that's the message we really need to communicate, not only to the parents in our buildings, but also to the public. You know, I've, I've taught in six or seven different elementary schools, they were all different and they were all wonderful, each in its own way. And I would not have had any problems sending any of my kids to any of our schools in Rochester or哪儿. And parents can really help me with their attitude of not being traumatized forever.
For sake of trying to, a little bit of a long here, I think we need to make a decision on, do you want some type of boundary adjustments for next year? And if the answer is yes, then I suggest that we take a brief break and then come back because we're going to have to get a guiding change document done because if we do not come back with a, a plan for the 20th, which is less than a week away, I don't think that will go very well. So we're going to have to get a guiding change document done tonight. But if the consensus is we can wait another year, I think we can schedule another study session to do a guiding change document. So... So we're not allowed to vote, but I will make eye contact with you individually to see if there's consensus to make some type of boundary adjustment for next year. I think I know where Jean is, Jean did yes.
I have a question too. If for instance, that our suggestion is that we make a change for next year, do we need a, a guiding change document if we just say, for instance, option two, the boundaries outlined in option two for next school?
No, we wouldn't, but I guess I would like to hear why, why the board likes option two versus option one.
So what's the difference?
Option one basically takes kids that are closer to Hoover, whereas option two takes kids that are further away, that's pretty much the difference.
But option two is just the Elton Hills?
No, option two had a different section in Gibbs as well.
Oh, I see.
No, not different, same.
We didn't do different.
I don't think same.
Different. So I'll try it again.
I would like to see, just a change next year for Elton Hills. They do anything else if they want, or give us some time to really examine things in depth, maybe you'll have an idea from the task force where they use, what might be milked and have all those other considerations as well, but I, I really think that you could do something about it in the last year.
I saw some head shaking there.
Totally agree.
Deborah? Okay, all right. Can you really take a break?
We are determining, we're reselling, that's what I said, we are reselling at, by, being at six oh five P M. My understanding is that we will be doing a guiding change document or recommendations for boundary changes for twenty eighteen.
Unless, there was some discussion about building option two, is that? No, you wanna start the track? Okay.
Well, here's the thing, option two would take, would move about a hundred students out of Elton Hills to Churchill Hoover. Um, I think the question was whether the neighborhoods cited in option two were the best choice.
I guess I, I'm just curious why option one won, like I said, I need to get an answer for that.
Why option one won, excuse me?
Why? Yeah. Option one, that's the group of kids closer to the Hoover school.
Because they complained? I mean, Carla would, I mean, that's why, that's my understanding why we came up with option two.
Okay, all right.
So there's option two on this document that we're looking at, so option two is only Elton Hills, Hoover, Churchill, is that correct?
Yes.
Julie, which specific document, can I have?
It's the last one. It's called.
That's what I marked six. I marked six.
Yes. You have A, B, C, boundary change impacts and section comparison.
Mark, can you make sure you speak up for Jean?
Certainly.
And you? Usually I have a problem with you, but.
Usually you don't have a problem.
We're all kind of looking over our computers, so I project everyone, project. Thank you.
I'm an IT guy, we don't charge.
Why? See?
Okay, I, I guess I, I would suggest A through G on the what will all be eliminated, they really don't apply to, if you're only adjusting one school's boundaries. So I guess I would ask the board, how many, how many students you want out of Elton Hills?
Option two, whether that's the area we were in, suggestion area that was about a hundred students.
Hundred eight.
And those are just three different kids, right? That doesn't include?
Right.
I was gonna say curbing.
Section.
Exactly.
I, I guess I need to go back to the question of, again, if we do like twenty eighteen, you're right, those things don't necessarily apply, but if we had the additional twenty nineteen, they would all apply to that.
Right.
So I, I don't know why the discussion isn't more, well, why don't we add a couple specifics for twenty eighteen to what's here, which I think would be really good, versus removing what is here and creating two documents.
Well, the question is, are we just looking at the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year right now, and then we will look at the nineteen, twenty school year after we have more information from the task force and building and everything else? I would just just think have a totally separate document for that year, and I don't think we need to be doing that right now. Because we don't have enough information, I don't have enough information.
Just a clarifying question maybe for John about timeline. I know we talked about trying to have the nineteen step out before the kindergarten event in November, so that parents would know where they're headed before they sign kids up for kindergarten. Is the task force timeline, can it allow us feedback for that?
No. There's no way, they don't have that, none that quickly.
So I just wanted to clarify that, that we probably can't wait for task force feedback if we want to have it done before people register for kindergarten.
So we're only looking at?
Summer, really?
Yeah, the summer of twenty nineteen.
No, this summer, planning for fall of nineteen. That makes sense. So we'd be a year in advance, essentially, or almost.
Yeah, and that's why I understood the superintendent said in her last board meeting, you know, November decisions should, or, yeah, decisions should have already been made so that what Amy just said could have occurred, and if, but that's, will that be suffered from the two thousand eighteen? So I guess it goes back to what Julie, are we just looking right now? I, I, I would recommend that we create a document just for what you want done for next school year, and then once we survive that process, we'll have another study session to do another one of these for, for the nineteen, twenty school year. And we understand that will have to occur probably sometime over the summer, or definitely before.
Summer, the fall, early fall.
Well, maybe I'm missing something here, a guiding change document, but if we keep the why, not how, it seems maybe what we're looking at is to provide short-term relief to overcrowding at either Elton Hills or Elton Hills and Gibbs beginning the fall of twenty eighteen. Is that what the, what it is?
I thought we had pretty much landed, well, I was thinking that we were just focusing on Elton Hills.
Okay, and which is?
But that's me, I don't know, maybe we need to go back around and-
But do we need something that's more specific or bigger than that?
Yes.
Okay.
We really need how many kids you want out of Elton Hills, and then we can design some options from that, but right now we're, is a hundred the magic number, is a hundred and fifty?
Can I give you a formula?
Knew that would come from you. Sir, I'm sure we have some people on the cabin, more than people are gonna figure it out.
How about a range of capacity with that being here this year?
Well, we didn't talk about either a percentage, you want it down to a hundred and twenty percent, or, or you want a hundred kids, just a hundred kids out of there, which, which are the two? Because we need the, we need some number to try to get as we start adjusting lines.
Well, and then does that hundred, just assuming there is a, a number for this hundred season, does that include all the exceptions? Or is that in addition?
I think let's get this done first, and then we'll talk about, and I think we could include that as one of the results, say-
Because if we're talking about moving a hundred kids out of Elton Hills, we might be, if, if, if the goal is to get a hundred kids out of Elton Hills without looking at how many of those hundreds would come from those three other areas with daycare and open enrollment and location, relocation, then that may, that, that hundred might be-
Well, you could just say you want to get it down to a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty percent of capacity, and, but we're not gonna restrict you, you can do it through exceptions, you can do it through moving neighborhoods, right?
That's more in line with what I was thinking, it's a percentage instead of hard pressed numbers.
Number gives us something for, or percentage, yeah, percentage, yeah. So, like John just said.
So a reduction of twenty-five percent.
I'm not on board. I said, maybe do a range, like say, try to get Elton to one ten to one twenty, or one hundred to one fifteen, something like that. And then don't restrict our options.
Right.
See what we can get done through exceptions, maybe take a small chunk of neighborhood, maybe not.
I would want to do, I mean, I personally, I would want to give you as much, a, a bigger circle of work and rather than trying to, you know, because you're the ones that are doing the, the, my children.
Is it possible to, in considering that range, um, to convert that to numbers? What really are we talking, what we're saying? So at least we can, maybe that range is too low and we want it a little higher.
So Elton Hills, we're saying three fifty is the number, that could be ideal for a hundred percent, then, um, each ten percent is thirty-five over that, right?
Right, yep.
One ten would be three eighty-five, one twenty would be four twenty. So that's, you know, down to about a hundred.
In which case, I mean, some of that, depending what number it is, some of that might be solvable just by those exceptions.
Exactly.
So what's, just remember you lost us to put on the guiding change document, you want to go ahead and clear out all those on the what?
Yep, I've been actually typing in the stuff already, I need to leave it out. That's what I typed was what, reduce the number of students at Elton Hills by a range of a hundred to a hundred and ten percent of capacity through exceptions and or moving students. So that's come up with, just as a direct.
So Jean's language about short-term relief to overcrowding, is that going in?
You mean like the why, under the what?
Oh, that's the lines under why, not the what.
It goes under the what?
You're right.
Okay.
Never mind.
Just doing the right now?
No.
Okay, can I, can I take a step back, clarify a question please, John? Between the, I've been, Caroline, I've been trying to dig through the, okay, throwing Caroline to the bus, okay. We were trying to look at the number of students between option one and option two neighborhoods. Is that something that's really, like, in your brain, a quick beginning?
Just the total number of students that would be reduced with option one going out of Elton and option two going out of Elton. So I was looking back at the-
So we have minus thirty-six on option one. Unfortunately, that's like this year, so if we took it, as of today, we moved thirty-six kids in this school year, that doesn't necessarily mean that's thirty-six kids of next school year, that's where, I think we got kind of caught on that by a member of the public saying, "Numbers don't matter."
I think it's the opposite, John, because on here, sorry, small elementary schools, that's as of two eight eighteen, we have Elton Hills at four eighty-three, and then the option one boundary change would bring them down to four forty-seven. So that's thirty-six, right now, as of twelve, as of twelve one seventeen, we've got Elton at five twenty-five, so this must have been our projection.
That, that was where we, you know, that was like February twenty-something, numbers where we were at, when we, how many kids are registered for next year.
Next year.
Whereas the scenarios were dealt, developed with kids from this year, because that's where we were at that one, we were still in this year talking this kid numbers, so thirty-six of this kid numbers doesn't necessarily mean thirty-six of next year.
Thirty-six of next year's numbers.
Do we know, John, how many students, um, Churchill Hoover can take in before they get overcrowded?
That's my next question.
Okay, so if we want to keep them more, like at, it's an ideal at Churchill would be two fifty, so if you went ten to twenty percent more than that, that would be three hundred, kind of on the high end, which means we have two twenty registered for next year, so you're talking adding thirty to, and we still have kindergarteners registering too.
Right, and that's, and Churchill's just taking two anyway.
Still thirty to eighty more there, less than the new kindergarteners or people just naturally moving around.
And we really only have two rooms at Hoover, I mean, if we're about that, and two more-
Depending how the numbers, the grade that the kids you move out, you may not build a full classroom. It depends on how, unless you, as I said last Tuesday, unless you go on block and say, "I need some third graders," you three are going, or your second grader in that building, your, the house, you're, you're going over here, I mean, you're rolling the dice hoping that the kids that you move out.
Along that line, when I volunteered some at Elton Hills, Linda Rood had a, I think there was a second, third grade classroom, do they still do that there?
No, not combined, no, not this year. And on the same token, by moving kids out of Hoover, or, or Elton, we may not have a room.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's, yeah, it's a point I was trying to say.
So they may not have, now granted, they may have, they'll have less kids in the building altogether, but they may not have another space.
Well, and then are we talking about eliminating this year's fourth graders from Elton Hills moving, so we're gonna take?
I, I would like that up there too, as, maybe that's under the not how, like, don't move nineteen, nineteen fifth graders, or don't move-
Or do they have that option?
Or give them the option.
I don't, I don't care, I'm just wondering, before they have the option to stay or to come to their new school.
And since we're going Churchill Hoover, do you not move then, like, this year's second graders so that they don't have to move, you know, this year's first graders, they go to Churchill for one year and then switch them over for the next year? Most people look at that as one campus and it's just an extension.
I, I think we need to look at that, but, I mean, I, I really feel sorry about that they work really hard to be one, one, two buildings.
Well, how do we, how do we talk about it? How do we talk about it? We talk, we say Churchill Hoover, I mean, that's how we discuss it, if, if one-
Because they're gonna go with their cohort.
Some people beat us up though, on how come you're letting fifth graders stay because you don't want them to go to school, 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 but you're making first graders go to school and then to school.
Because all of the first graders in Churchill are gonna go, or all of the second graders are gonna go to second grade, it's not just like your kids are moving.
Correct.
They're all moving.
So do you have the second graders? Do you have twenty nineteen second graders, the option?
I think they're saying take off that second grade, that second grade would go, have the option of staying.
Too many very-
But we're not moving any kids out of Churchill Hoover, why do we need that statement up there?
So we really need this one for moving the fifth graders.
We're moving kids into those schools, we're not taking any of them out, so that's-
It should be a thousand.
No, what, what, what the Elton Hills parents are looking at is saying, "Okay, you're gonna move my kid to Churchill for second grade, that's one building, and then you're gonna move them again to Hoover," but they don't understand that it's one campus and that's, and that every second grader's gonna move, I think that's-
It's just meant to be.
Were the second and fifth graders at Elton Hills? Yes. Okay, that's what I, twenty nineteen fifth graders, that's what I heard, okay. Were it's moving second graders?
No.
No, fifth graders. Fifth graders. Our next year's?
Next year's fifth graders. Get to the fast.
I guess the, the more, the more restrictive you, you are, which, on one part makes it easier for us, but the more restrictive you are, let's say we wanted to reconfigure the grade structures at those two buildings, so when you put something like that in, that eliminates, say instead of moving, uh, a few of this grade, we just move that whole grade goes over to there, I mean- Yeah, if you throw this ties your hands, we probably shouldn't include it. It's up to you.
But if you're moving, you need to, like, so Elton Hills would only get K through four? Or what?
I, I caution just throw anything out there, because I don't want it to be on the front page of the newspaper, and this is what we're doing. But, when you, the tighter you are, you're pretty much saying, we're going to move a group of, a neighborhood. That's the only option we have. Versus, you could look at, could you make one school a 3.5? And one a K2? No, it is K2, right? And move to second grade, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, more restrictions you have, then it's limited to, you're just going to have to move a neighborhood of kids that direction.
So, so you're, you're suggesting the possibility that none of these schools, Elton, Churchill, or Hoover, would have their current grade configuration?
No, we don't know.
No, we don't know. I'm just saying.
That that could be an option.
That could be an option. Especially if I'm trying to make sure I fill all of those open classrooms, then a better guarantee to make that happen is moving grades, higher grade levels versus a neighborhood of kids.
And by including it on the current guiding change document, it takes out.
Yeah, and, and if that's what the board wants, that's fine. I'm just saying, when, it, to be honest with you, it makes it easier for us, the tighter it is, then it limits the, our creativity and options. So if it's easier to what we break, well, it's so tight that there's only really one thing to do. So, I mean, it's, either way you look at it, I guess.
So one of the things that I'm just kind of curious, as I'm listening to the conversation, one of the whats that we typically tried to really have, and my part is exact same table, talk about it often, was the importance of engaging stakeholders in the conversation, for the opportunity of feedback. And then I turn and I look at my calendar, and my heart begins to race just a bit.
We won't be able to do it.
So are we saying that we're going to make the decision, and these families won't have a voice? I'm just, I'm just asking. And we're okay with that?
Well, I'm not saying that.
I mean, I think at some point, you know, especially if you're talking about reconfiguring what grades are of what school, if that's the decision that the board decides to make, I mean, how much parental input would it take for us to not do that, if we decide that's the best decision? I mean, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here a little bit.
Well, so along those lines, one could argue the squeaky wheel is getting their boundaries adjusted.
Exactly. Why did we let Summit Point North and Stonehenge get so much weight at this table? If Indian Heights Park doesn't, it can't.
Yep.
Or even, we're adjusting the boundaries of one school. Why? Because we've heard the adults say.
Right.
So, it's the same concept.
Because for me, what's true is because it's the most overcapacity with the nearby relief. For my neighborhood, having more say than the others, from my point of view, I would just, I listened to everybody else saying, yes, they were more vocal, but it isn't necessarily a weighing factor for me.
I, I think to Mark's point would be, if, if we didn't have New Hoover coming, would we be having this discussion?
If we didn't have why?
New Hoover, like, I know. They call it New Hoover at My Oaks.
Oh.
So I just keep.
Hoover Early Learning Center.
Right.
Great question.
Yeah, we wouldn't have space.
Early learning school.
We would just be having 2019 discussions.
What is that, My Oaks, two, two, five, all?
Two plus, that was better.
Okay, so, I have a clarifying question. Then, so, we put option one out, and we contacted those parents.
Yeah, we sent them a letter, we sent them an email, and then option two, so there wasn't enough time to post, we did send out a email to the new families that were impacted, saying, another option being brought forward, and I think Heather said 10 families did provide feedback on the, electronically.
Okay.
And I think it's much different than what you already heard from the other groups of parents. But, me personally, even though we don't have to let parents give feedback when we make decisions, but I think it's always best to try to. I know we're in a really tight front. But, I mean, that's, we'll just have to deal with that, because there'll be some people who will say, whatever option six is, we didn't have it, we didn't know about it, until we read about it in the paper. So, and I anticipate we'll probably bring more than one option on the 20th. So I guess we could send out an email, based on however many options, and say, there's been boundary adjustments being presented to the board, you're impacted. We encourage you to go to the board meeting if you want to look.
How about six?
Right. So, we could do that, too.
I think that's a good option, and I think if we, on the document, that the goal is to get Elton Hills to between 100 and 115% or 120% of its current.
Go up to 120.
Go up to 120. Through, again, through whatever.
Maybe 125?
30% within one, or two standard deviations of the goal.
You said 10%, so what, 35%?
So if we went to 120, we'd be looking at a moment of 420. What, we're at this year, 5 and a quarter?
5 and a half.
So 120 or 110?
Up to 120?
Up to 120%. Could work.
Any other whats you want to accomplish besides getting that percentage of kids out of Elton Hills? So what? 120? Okay, let's look at another column, the, when doing that, do not do these things. Obviously, we probably want to say violate, violate the law, which, that kind of goes to the open enrollment question that we were discussing, we were having earlier. Create known imbalances of inequity of resources. I think that's a good one to have, because that would play into probably more for in reduced percentage, because then that would impact people with compensatory and title funding. Making boundary changes which reduce class sizes that cause a negative financial impact. The rationale for that is, is kind of what I said earlier this evening, that, one, we want to, we want to put it on paper, that the boundary adjustments does not reduce class sizes. And, as the example I gave you with Jefferson, through these boundary changes, if we take 100 kids out of Elton, we may reduce class size, or at least reduce a section, causing the class sizes to go up, but not exceeding the cap. So that's kind of what that statement is trying to address, because we don't want people to come in and say, well, yeah, you took 100 kids out, but my class size went. We had one parent who, from Jefferson, who got on social media and made that to our attention, but we were well aware of that. I think they went from 25, four section to 25, to three section to 29, I think they went to, but still, under 31 cap. So that's why that statement's there. And, whatever boundary adjustments we make does not exceed our budget and financial parameters. And, and then, we think it's important not to create a racially isolated school when we make that change. And then we added, allow an existing mindset to prohibit us from creating ways to dress when, where, and how, or that certain other. Any other things you don't want us to do?
The fifth graders are still up there.
What's that?
The fifth graders are still up there.
Do you want me to take that down?
I would recommend that, but I guess it's kind of what, what the board wants. I think you should be taking off, I said. While I tie the hands of, it's something that's actively being considered at this point, but the reality may suggest that it's something that could be a viable educational, be something educationally viable for us, which then will allow the superintendent to later come and say, well, why don't we do this? I do think in 2014, we did give students that if it were your, it would have been your last year in that school, we allowed them the option to stay if they want to. It was their last year, so.
But that would tie it, if we moved, if we moved a grade level, that would not let us do that?
Right, that would.
That's the one option, that that would take off the table?
Good point. Probably should, right. Okay, just to take it off. Any other guidance on, don't do this while you're trying to accomplish that? Is there any, and I say this just because it seemed to be part of our discussion, not some of tonight, but throughout this process, is there, you know, there's some who think we should take kids that are already being bused? Don't take kids that they can see their school from their front porch.
Worked it on IJLs.
Well, that's, that's what we talked about, too. If you live on a hill, it's an IJL, does that count?
Well, I think those things, once again, tie your hand. They do affect.
They do.
And if we're really looking to have a solution that's going to actually work, it could be part of what you're definitely just working to.
I think personally, I would have a hard time with students who are able to walk to the school being put on a bus. I'm not saying that would need to be up there, but I think that would impact my decision-making going forward.
That's.
Okay.
So.
So we wouldn't be able to take any.
We wouldn't be able to take a grade level, then. That, again, takes that off the, because you can't, you know, we would have some fifth graders that might.
So, so, so what I hear, okay, so, maybe I'm jumping ahead, because what I, what I'm hearing is, there is a possibility of suggesting a grade level go, and in my head, I'm thinking, so when you, when you say that, can you, if that's an option, what, what would that mean? Like, taking all the fifth graders out of Elton Hills, just as an example?
Yeah.
Could you probably?
Yeah, just take all of them and, and put them in Hoover. So Hoover would have a several section, I mean, for example, several section of fifth grade and fourth grade.
Because some of those students are probably within the distance of Hoover's.
Oh, yes.
According to Google, they're point eight miles apart.
And when you put the walking boundaries circles across the building, they overlap.
Yeah. So, so does it, so does it do any good for me to say, my, I personally, that would be a tough sell for me?
Because why?
Because if I had a second grader and a fifth grader, and you told me my fifth grader was going to go to a different building, I now have two elementary students in two different buildings, and as a parent, with my parent engagement hat on, that means I've got two PTAs, that means I've got two student, two carnivals in two buildings, that means I've got two buildings of conferences. So, I'm just, I'm saying it, it would be a really tough sell for me.
You've got a kid that'll Churchill and a kid Hoover. You've got two of them every year.
Yes, but it's our, it's a different culture, because we're all still one school. I mean, we're all in the same place. We're, we're still the cohort of our school.
They coordinate their conferences on the same.
So you have two principals to work with. I'm just, that's what I, I'm just.
Well, I mean, that's why I threw it out there, because I came up with other.
Well, I mean, at some point, I had three kids, and they were in three different schools, and it was not fun, but, I mean, you know, you neither, you know, there's a question about, do we keep the kids?
So then is it possible to extend that spirit of cooperation to a third campus? Elton Hill, Hoover, Churchill.
Like coordinating conferences and things like that, yes.
So instead of a two-building cohort, I mean, it's all three?
Well, in terms of coordination of, yeah. I mean, that addresses that, possibly.
K1, K2, K3, K4.
Hey, how about we make Churchill a K5, Hoover a K5?
Well, blow up everything right now, I'm about that, and something new, so.
Well, you know, my crazy idea, so, I'm not saying publicly, but. I, I tell you, it'll work. It's got to figure it out.
You know, this, well, this is, that idea of K1, K2, K3, K4.
Just been doing a lot of brainstorming lately.
Well, I think that would be an interesting option, but we're good.
All right, last call for not, any other not houls. So we will move forward, and I anticipate coming with at least a couple options for you on the 20th. And typically, the way we do it is we try to say, this is our first recommendation, we go and hit most of what's on the sheet. Option two hits most of them. I think even in 14, I think we even numbered how many, this one hits eight of the, and this one hits four, or whatever. But, I anticipate we'll have more than one option, so we hopefully will have the right option that night, so we can move forward with staffing and, but I, I want to make sure we're all on the same page, that we're really not, whatever we adopt next Tuesday is not, there's not going to be an opportunity to engage those families. We could after, it's done already, but as far as giving them an opportunity to come and tell us all these things.
Board docs about Friday, if you have to say.
And we can, we can, we can rile up a few more people and just say, the board's going to be discussing these two options, your child's may be impacted. We encourage you to come to the board meeting. I mean, we can do that through Sky Alert, or send them, Sky Alert, tell them to read their email. So we can do that.
Would it be possible to, to ask the principals of those three schools to either attend a meeting or to get together and talk about how they might, depending on what the actions are, how they might make the transition easier for kids and families, so that they could be a reassuring force?
Yeah, we can ask them to do that.
I mean, I just.
I just don't, I don't know when, well, to be honest with you, it may, it may not, well, it's not going to be done to be in board docs right away, I can tell you that. Today's already Wednesday, and our calendars are booked solid with staffing and a couple other things tomorrow. I mean, we're going to have to try to squeeze it in whenever we can, so it literally may not be loaded into the system until Monday, maybe Tuesday morning. I mean, it's really, it's really, it's a, it's a really bad time right now with us, with staffing, and trying to get the budget close to being finalized, and we squeezed in a couple, interviewed principal interviewers today, this morning, and so, we'll try to squeeze in all the time we can to work on it, but I just, I know we won't have it by Friday morning. I can, I just know it won't.
I think, though, it's safe to say that our principals will do whatever they can to make this transition the easiest as possible for our families. So, I, I think it will be right with us.
I mean, the other thing we might, we might learn is that, I'll just use the example of, you know, K1, K2, K3, K4, K5, that's an idea worth, that would be worth exploring, but not for this fall. You know, so anything, any of the options that we decide not to do, could still. You know, so anything, any of the options that we decide not to do could still be on the table for future discussion, but just not for the eighteen nineteen school.
I have a question about, that kind of dropped off in our conversation, about the middle and high school tracks. So whether that, I don't know, if we, if anybody has anything to say about the not how, are we just going to let that be part of, if, are we going to leave that alone? I don't know. I just kind of throwing that out there because we didn't, we didn't really talk about those pieces as much.
So we would, I think we get option two, but option one, I know for sure, we played it all the way through, first school, high school. So we can do that with whatever option we bring for, so you can see how it's going to impact at least for that first year. And then, you know, as those grades move through, it may be, you may have a small eighth grade or seventh grade class, but then the sixth grade, following year is bigger, so you'll have more kids going to middle school the second year than you would in the first year. But we can play out the first year of how it impacts middle schools and high schools and even pre-graduates percentage. I mean, we can do all of that for the options that we...
I think another thing we need to consider too is, if we make a change, the eighteen, nineteen school year will be only for that school year or until we get a new building built? I'm just thinking, once again, my brain's kind of stuck on the K-one, K-two, K-three, K-four, K-five combination. Because if you say to parents, "This is going to be just for one year," I mean, I think that would be a little bit...
My recommendation would be, first party question, no. When you build a new school, everybody's going to, all the boundaries are going to have to change. Either that or you open a new building that half its, I mean, half its capacity. I would hope that the number that you were targeting for Elton Hills will be done with Elton Hills. We're not going to come back the following year and take additional kids. I would rather just upset those families once for the next three, four years instead of come back again with them. So I would say, my recommendation, not a one-year change. It would be until the new schools are balanced and then everybody's going to...
So to me, so what I feel like you're saying might be something under a not how is that we, the goal would be to do something that, at Elton Hills, that is a, not just a short-term solution, that we're not going to go back and nibble the edges next year or two years from now.
That would be my preference, yes.
So I don't know if that, if, if now we're done with three board members, but that's what I think. I just, I just think keeping nibbling is how I look at it. I don't think it's good personally.
Actually, we are a need to adjourn.
We're not, we're not supporting this, we need to adjourn. We are supporting.
Okay, I think we have to get this meeting.
Needing to adjourn us. Where is that?